Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, meeting of the Quincy City Council. Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
President.
Counselor DeBona.
President.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Hughes. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Palmucci. President Crowe.
Present.
Eight members.
Members. Counselors and members in the audience, please stand and join me in a moment of silence. Please, keeping in our thoughts and prayers, those brave men and women who so courageously defend our country. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, if you will please read into the record the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And with that, the first item on the agenda, please.
Number one, 2019-003, An Appropriation for 262,000 Local Max for FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant for Purchase of a New Rescue One.
Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I am going to actually ask Chief Cadigan if he can come up and speak to this. I know that the firefighters have done some work in procuring some dollars from the federal government, and I'd love you to talk about that tonight. Thank you.
Chief Cadigan, welcome to the council, and congratulations on your new role.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. All the studying doesn't really prepare you for a place like this, but please bear with me. I'll get my feet grounded in the public speaking thing eventually, then I'll probably have to retire. If I could, I'd like to just take a moment, read something that I wrote down. I'm only here tonight because of a group of very special people that took it upon themselves to do something very special. So if I could just read this briefly, I'll try not to step over my own words. It's an honor to be here tonight, not for anything that I did, but to acknowledge and thank a group of people who have demonstrated the true meaning of a team effort, a practice that has always been admired by the members of the Quincy Fire Department. Because of a few, they saw the need and the importance of replacing a 20-year-old heavy rescue vehicle, and they took the time to educate themselves in grant writing. They were then assisted by others of like-minded, proactive department members. We are brought here tonight to discuss the acquisition of this new Quincy Fire Department heavy rescue emergency vehicle. At a savings to the city and to her taxpayers, which I am one, of a total of $622,728. As a fellow firefighter and a Quincy taxpayer, I very much want to thank them. I'd like to thank Congressman Stephen Lynch, Mayor Tom Coke, Acting Chief Joe Jackson, Captain Rich Bryant, Master Mechanics Mike O'Connor, and Kevin Meller, and firefighter Whirly. If they're here, if they'd please stand for a moment, so that I can say thank. I did not forget anybody. And lastly, but certainly not least, two firefighters that spearheaded this endeavor, started the process that brings us here tonight, gives me my first ulcer, and at a savings again of $622,728 to the city of Quincy and the Quincy Fire Department, I'd like to introduce firefighters Jerry Murphy and Chris Murphy. Please stand, guys, if you're here tonight. That's the end of it. Walk in the side, though, and I guess as chief, this is phenomenal. The equipment that we're on right now is extremely old for the work that we do. I don't think there's any mother, husband, father, whoever, that would be wanting to drive down the streets of any city in a 20-year-old vehicle with their loved ones in it. Yet we respond day in and day out to emergency incidents under extreme conditions in a 20-year-old heavy rescue. Not the safest thing, but we do what our job requires. NFPA standards, I believe, Deputy Jackson has informed me that after 25 years, which were a short time away from, this vehicle has to be scrapped. So we're very fortunate to be replacing a vehicle that must be replaced with federal monies and a grant that, again, the taxpayers are going to have a huge savings. Just want to say thank you to them again, and thank you to you and the taxpayers of Quincy, because of which we wouldn't have the fine fire department that we have, because it does take money, and we greatly appreciate it. And I'll promise you one thing, I don't like to waste money. I will never come here wasting your money or the taxpayers' money. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll try to help. What I can answer, I'm going to defer it to Joe Jack, Deputy Jackson, because he was the acting chief at the time a lot of this was going on. Like I said, I had nothing to do with this, but it is in all these fine people.
All right, with that, move approval?
Motion made by Counselor Kane to approve, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Hughes. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor Palmucci. President Crowe.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. The item passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all very, very much, and again.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2019-004, Order Adoption of the 2019 Political Calendar.
Motion made by Counselor Hughes to approve, seconded by, uh, seconded, see, adoption of the political calendar? Seconded by Counselor Mahoney. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes. Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor Palmucci. President Crowe.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members. The item passes. The next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
2019-005, An Order of Designation of the Polling Places.
Motion made by Counselor Hughes to approve, seconded by Counselor Harris. Any discussion? Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to comment on the polling places, Ward Five Precinct One is going back to Fort Square Presbyterian Church. Do you see any foreseeing where that's going to change, or is that going to stay there, pretty much without the Career Center no longer in existence?
So the plan, at least for this year, is to keep it at that location.
Okay. And on top of that, I know we had spoken in the past, Madam Clerk, we talked about the safety of some of the kids at the locations. Are we going to make sure that we have some police officers just at the children, at the entrances of the polling places, like supervising also with the kids, making sure that nobody goes in the wrong exit of the doors, or do we?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. We do work very closely with Mark Follin, Detective Follin of the Quincy Police Department. He ensures us that there'll be officers at those locations.
Thank you. And I know we spoke about it in the past, especially at the Squanum Elementary School, that just, you know, some of the polling places, like Beachwood North and Walson School, and some of the other schools, it's just, you know, there's ongoing classes, and just want to make sure about that. And then, thirdly, is Ward Five Precinct Three. Had a few complaints, I know, I'm talking about Kirsten, Counselor Hughes's ward, had some complaints in the last election that there was no parking at the Adams Academy. People were going in and couldn't find a spot. I know that there's designated parking at that lot. Is there any way of maybe getting them moved out for Election Day, or?
They do pay to park in that lot. I have spoke with Dr. Fitzgerald in the past, and he has designated areas right along the front curb and along the side curb, too, in the lot itself. I'll sure to talk to him again and make sure that there's some spots designated.
Okay. And one last polling place, Ward Six Precinct One, North Quincy High School. I seem to see that that's been difficult in the morning, just getting folks in to vote and, you know, have the classes going in at 7:00 in the morning. Just, we just have to foresee this. I mean, I see it when I'm out there, and it's just, you never want somebody to turn into a place to go vote and pull all the way around and go, "I got no place to park," and they leave. That's kind of the, I know we do the early voting and weekend stuff, and...
And we did do the early voting on the Hunt Street side.
Yep.
And it was a huge success. So, you know, maybe in the future, going to the Hunt Street side would be best. So if I can make an appointment and speak with the superintendent of schools and see if that's an option.
Or maybe, maybe put in some, designating the first 10 spots when you first get into the parking lot is to be designated for voting, and just says voting, and that's really it.
And we work...
And maybe we can get some of the staff to park in the back Hunt, Hunt Street parking lot where Creedon Field is.
We do work very close with Kevin Sagala as well, and he's more than accommodating, as is the rest of the school department, Dr. DeChristopheraro, and we may have some slight changes here and there. We did move to the front of the Water Street side entrance of Lincoln Hancock, would like to go back to the cafeteria. So I'll talk to the superintendent and the principal there again to make sure that we can get back into the cafeteria.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
You also have a counsel?
President Crowe, yep.
Oh, yeah. No problem. Motion made by Counselor Hughes, seconded by Counselor Harris. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowe.
Yes.
Eight members.
The item passes. Yeah, yes, please.
I didn't get my hand up in time before you ended discussion, but if I could just throw out there, Madam Clerk, I know in the last, I think, election, we had, I had kind of put out the idea based on a resident's concern, and that I share is that maybe looking at putting a detail out on Quarry Street at the Elks polling place, you know, traffic in the city's crazy everywhere, but it really has gotten to a point up there where it's kind of, it's dangerous when folks are pulling out. So maybe if it's not for the municipal election, but certainly before the presidential election, if we're expecting a heavy turnout, it might be worth adding that kind of to the budget in terms of what we prepare for when we're doing elections moving forward, just having someone out there who can help direct cars when they're leaving the polling place, just to safely enter, enter the traffic flow on Quarry Street, because it's kind of a blind, you're at the top of the hill, it's kind of blind in both directions, so just throwing that out there.
I did speak to Detective Follin after our phone call, and he agreed.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
A pleasure. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2019-006, Order of a Home Rule Petition Except...
Weave the reading. Counselor Flo is yours.
Thank you. This is a, as many of you know, the governor signed into law recently, a short-term rental legislation that impacts the entire state and becomes effective, I believe, July 1st of this year. There are two main, three main tenants of that legislation. The first is that it creates a registry that anybody who has a short-term rental property in Massachusetts would have to register their addresses, information, and then municipalities would be able to see where these properties are across the Commonwealth. The second is that the hotel motel tax that some municipalities, including Quincy, have would be applied to these, and the short-term rental companies like Airbnb, HomeAway, whatever, they would have to collect those fees and turn them over to the municipality. And then the third tenant of the legislation allowed for a, the adoption by communities of a local community impact fee of 3% that would be used for affordable housing and infrastructure improvements. And I think, and I would hope that we're all well aware of the negative, the potential negative impact that short-term rentals, such as Airbnb-type properties, can have on raising the, or limiting the number of affordable housing units in the city as the, as those properties come online, Boston's, just something Boston's struggling with. So I think this, I would urge adoption of this. It allows for us to collect a local community impact fee on any, it only applies to really professional investors with these type of properties. I believe it only applies to anybody who has two or more short-term rental properties. So this 3% community impact fee wouldn't be assessed on someone who just has an extra bedroom in their home, or an in-law suite, or something like that that they, that they use. It would be someone who has more than one property, which is typically an investor-type. So I don't think this hits anybody where it hurts in terms of, you know, the John Q. Citizen, who's trying to, you know, supplement their income by renting out an extra bedroom. And I would urge, all we have to do is adopt, adopt a resolution such as this, and then we opt into that local community impact fee. So that being said, I would move approval.
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Palmucci. Just out of curiosity, what defines a short-term rental?
It's defined in the statute. I don't recall off the top of my head. So I don't want to, I don't want to answer, because I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's something like 14 days out of the year.
Got it. Okay. And so does anything more specific need to be added to this, to go into a specific fund? It just says that it would be, you know, allocated to either affordable housing or local infrastructure improvements? How can we guarantee that those will go to either? And why 35% also?
That's the, that's what the legislation called for.
Press hold, okay.
Yeah. It said up to, so, or it said no, I think it was the, it either said up to or no greater than, but that was the max, and so I took a little bit of creative license when I drafted it to say, "We should do the max," because I think we should. No, there isn't. And I, you know, when I drafted this, I kind of thought of, well, should we segregate a fund? And I figured one step at a time. I mean, we could always do that. This doesn't even come online until July 1st of 2019, so from my perspective, I thought, let's kind of put it on the books, say we're going to do it. I honestly don't even know how many properties this would affect in Quincy. If you go on Airbnb, for instance, you can, and you look up Quincy, you can see there's a couple hundred, several hundred properties, but you have no idea who owns the properties, right? So you don't know if more than, if one person or entity owns more than two, and that's the only folks who would be implicated by this. So chances are, this, this isn't going to affect all that many people, and the fund probably isn't going to be, you know, bursting at the seams. But I figured we do it this way, kind of see what happens after, I figure what the compliance date is, but as of July 1st, when the entire piece of legislation goes into place, we'll have a better understanding as to the short-term rental listings in properties in the city of Quincy and who owns them. And then we can kind of get a better sense of how much money's going to come in, and if we want to segregate it into a special fund, or something along those lines.
Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? The body? Seeing none. Counselor Hughes, did you?
No, I was just going to say, I think it's a great idea, it's a good use, especially when you think about using it for a particular fund, and seeing how much money is going to come into it, seeing if we want to set that aside.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Palmucci, I believe the stuff that I had read, that that was the definition of short-term, was 14 days or less.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
All right, seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowe.
Yes.
Eight members.
Members, the item passes. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is number five, 2019-077, A Resolve for St. Mary's School Property Update.
We have the reading.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution that I'm seeking to put into committee, just to receive an update from the administration as to what the status is with the St. Mary's School property that the council had voted to support funding the purchase of. It's been a while since we've heard about it, so I know there's a lot of folks in the West Quincy community who are interested. I mean, I think it's a, you know, the need for a, for a new community elementary school is certainly there, if not now, just around the corner on the horizon, so this would be a good opportunity, just to get an update from the administration as to where we are with the purchase, where we are with the plans. So I guess I would refer this to, I don't know, put it on my, oh, education and oversight.
And on that, in your resolution, does it say update from the administration, or is it more reflective of our colleagues in the school committee? I just think you...
Oh, yeah, I guess it's a, the school committee, because they have to, because what sparked this is, for me, is that I saw that the school committee had taken a vote at their last meeting, which I think was to accept the property. Mr. Walker, is that correct? Do you know what the vote was? They voted on this recently, and I remember thinking to myself, what the heck are they voting on? So obviously, it's school. I know they're eventually going to control it, but at this point, what they're voting on, so I wasn't sure. I guess I would amend my own resolution and just add administration, so where it says, "Be it resolved that the Quincy City Council requests the Quincy School Committee and/or Superintendent of the Quincy Public Schools and/or Administration."
And I only say that because just my anticipation would be that if, you know, a program moved forward down there, there'd be some sort of MSBA component, which obviously funnels through both Solicitor's Office as well as, you know, Mayor Coke, so just kind of want to tighten it up.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. So I'd amend it to add, and mayoral administration.
So we're going to vote on it as amended with a dual referral to education, and what was the other one, Counselor? Oversight.
Oversight. Yeah, we don't have to vote on it. We could just, we just refer.
Procedurally, so it gets to the mayor's desk, we cast a vote, and then we'll put in committee.
Sure, only because you want to. All right. Move approval and referral to committee.
Motion approved by Counselor Palmucci, seconded by Counselor Hughes. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowe.
Yes.
Eight members.
Next item on the agenda, please.
I just asked that be sent to the school superintendent and the school committee as well. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number six, 2019-008, A Resolve for the Quincy Dog Park and Animal Shelter Update. Whereas the city of Quincy has begun creating the access road...
Motion, wave the reading by Counselor Mahoney on the motion, Counselor.
So I'm bringing this resolve forward to get an update on mostly what's going on on Quarry Street with the access road for the new dog park and animal shelter. It's been going on for quite some time now, and as far as I know, no update to design plans were submitted to the city council. And I noticed that in an article that the city will be seeking proposals for work to be done, that's going to be anticipated start this spring on this project. So, and that the city had also hit some snags, so it did kind of enlighten me to kind of question where we were in this. So I basically, I'm just asking for the city to come back and just give us an update on that. And in that update, I'm specifically looking for the administration to report to us with detailed accounting of expenditures to the project to date, including the reports of where the funding is coming from, and then also the administration to give us an update on design, construction plans for the animal shelter and dog park, timelines, anticipated completion dates, any copies of proposals related to that, and information regarding contracts. The reason why I'm asking that is because it was unanimously, it was unanimously decided by this council to cut the bond in half, and one of the items of contention was also funding request for the construction of that access road. So I just really want to kind of understand what we're doing up there, and really what came to this was that it's where it's coming down, and that access road, I realize it's just an access road, is how dangerous that corner is, and I'd like to understand what's going to be happening up there, so. And I'd like to refer it to oversight.
Oversight?
Yep.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Mahoney, seconded by Counselor Palmucci. Any discussion on the item going to oversight? All right, Madam Clerk, please, call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowe.
Yes.
Eight members.
Okay. Approval of previous meeting minutes from January 7th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. The ayes have it. The next item is communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards, and the city clerk. Chris Bo has one.
I do have two this evening, one dated January 10th, 2019, to Richard Mead, the Chairman of the Quincy Planning Board, regarding case number 2018-11114, Whitwell Street. Dear Chairman Mead, I respectfully urge the...
Oh, I'll wave the reading there. It's my, this is my letter, right? Yeah. I just, I asked that to come in as a committee. I'd like to refer, and everyone was provided a copy, all the other councils were provided a copy of this, I'd just like to refer that matter to oversight. If we could give it a number and put it in the oversight committee, please, for future follow-up. I'd put that in a form of a motion.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Palmucci to accept the communication as presented, seconded by Counselor Mahoney. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
We're putting it in oversight.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowe.
Yep.
Eight members. And the next communication I have this evening is dated January 18th to Mr. Chris Reel, of Fox Rock Properties LLC.
I'll wave the reading of that. That's my second letter. I'd ask that that also accompany the last matter and be referred to the oversight committee. Be given a number and be referred to the oversight committee.
Going oversight, motion made, Counselor Palmucci, seconded by Counselor Mahoney. In that vein, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. Unfinished business in preceding meeting, seeing none, are reports of committees? Presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrances? Quiet, quiet group. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings. Our next meeting is Monday, February 4th, and we have on the docket beforehand a finance committee meeting at 6:30. Anybody else like to schedule something between now and then? Anybody else like to schedule something between now and then?
I want to schedule an oversight committee meeting. I owe Counselor Mahoney long overdue. I owe her the update on the capital improvement projects from, the only piece we didn't cover was Mr. Cassani's piece, and then maybe we'll do some other light lifting in the oversight committee. I don't know what, I don't know if we can come up with my own date here. Our next council meeting is the 4th, right?
Correct.
And then after that is the 25th?
That's right.
Want to do, what else is due today? I would, the 6th? People want to come back that Wednesday? After, we could do it the week after?
I think that's our planning board that night.
All right. How about I just schedule something offline? Mr. Walker, will you take care of making sure Mr. Cassani's made available to us? No, you can, you didn't think about that? Okay.
So at this point, I would...
I won't, I'll just, I don't like the pressure of everyone looking at me, trying to pick a date.
We're all looking at you.
Yeah, I know. I'll find a date. I'll find a date that's mutually annoying to everyone.
So it'll be, the assumption is, after February 4th?
Yeah, it looks, it looks like that.
So we'll schedule this committee meeting at the next council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before then, yeah. Sorry.
No, it's fine.